So welcome everyone to the November 7th Board of Trustees Meeting. Can we please all stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Camille, will you please call the roll?
Present.
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 Present and Trustee Engelbert is not feeling well today, so that's why she is not at her seat. The first order of business is an appointment, so I'd like to ask Darrell Taylor, I'm Darrell Taylor, sorry, Darrell Gray, we have a Darrell Taylor here, to come up. We are authorizing the appointment of Darrell Gray as a sanitation laborer. May I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so Mr. Gray, congratulations on your appointment to the Department of Public Works. You're welcome to say something. And you can, is the mic working? Wade, we need the mic?
Yeah, you might have to turn it on, Darrell.
There you go.
There you go.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that gave me this opportunity to work for DPW Toccoho. And I'mma just show up every day and do what I gotta do to prove that I'm worthy for the opportunity that y'all gave me.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Frank, would you like to say anything? I'm our superintendent of DPW.
Hi, I just want to say that Darrell has been working with us as seasonal for the past four months or so, and you know, during that time, Freddie, he showed an amazing amount of fortitude. He's very conscientious and very energetic. Besides that, he's much taller and stronger than I am, so. But I'm sure he'll be a great asset to the community and to the residents of Toccoho. He's shown that in the past four months, and I'm sure he'll show that moving forward. So the entire DPW would like to welcome aboard, welcome him aboard and congratulate him once again.
Thank you, thank you. So our next order of business, I know everyone is here for, is to congratulate our Toccoho 11-U Greater Hudson Valley Champions, so let's give them a hand. So I'd like to ask Trustee Taylor to help me to give every single one of you champions a certificate of acknowledgement. If you can come forward, all the baseball players and the coaches. He has, he has experience doing this. So first and foremost, we just want to say we are so proud of you guys and thank you to the coaches for all of your work throughout the year. We know that champions aren't made on their own, and we need, we need leaders like you to, to help coach our, our children. So we're gonna call your name and you're gonna come and shake Trustee Taylor's hand and take your certificate, okay? So the first person is Jackson Sanzillo. Congratulations. Robbie Ty. Dylan Mancuso. Will Waterstone. Not here, okay. Can someone take it for him? Joey Thompson. Mikey Ricotta. Brendan O'Sullivan. Charlie Savali. Parker Goman. Alessandro Delmistro. Liam Carpenter. And Marco Giordano. I present to you our champions, Toccoho. Not yet, gotta give you guys yours. And we also want to acknowledge our coaches. Coach Steve Sanzillo. Coach Chris Thompson. And Coach Ed Ty. Congratulations and thank you so much. Do you guys wanna take a picture all up here together? Anybody? Come on.
Are you in or are you out?
Okay. So next on our agenda, we are, so we're obviously highlighting our youth today. You know, this is a good meeting when we're having all our youth come forward. So Hudson Axelbaum, not Applebaum, sorry for the misspell. Good, is going to come forward and present his progress on the Toccoho Kids Table. If you guys recall, a few months back, Hudson came forward and said he wanted to do something to help his community, and he came up with the idea of the Toccoho Kids Table with the help of his mom and his dad and his brother. He raised money for two organizations, so I'm gonna let him take over and give us an update.
Wait.
He's ready, he's ready.
Hi, my name is Hudson Axelbaum, and I am seven years old. One year ago, on November 8th, 2021, I came before the board to present Tocco Kids Table. Tocco Kids Table is a special opportunity for kids in the village to sell homemade goods to benefit the village. We decided to raise money for the Tocco Juneteenth and Tocco Beautification Committees. With our, with your enthusiastic support, we launched our first Tocco Kids Table, we launched our first table on June 12th at the farmer's market. We held the first table, we held the table a total of seven times, and the community came out to support us. First, I wanted to say thank you to the Board of Trustees and those who made items for the table and helped us to sell items, like Sammy Sabrina and Sabella Anderson, Michelle Brish, and the Girl Scouts. Karina Zeggers and Olivia Evelyn Diane and Liam McKeeranen. I also wanted to thank every single person who brought an item or donated at the table. Your support means so much to us and our community. And now, I'm so excited to say that we raised a total of, drumroll! That's over $1,500 to each of the committees. We now want to welcome people from the committees to join us so we can give you these, the fun big checks.
Can the Juneteenth Committee and the Beautification Committee representatives come forward? If either, if either one of you would like to say something, you're welcome to.
Hello, everyone. Trustee of the board. My name is Stephanie Palmer. I'm an organizer, organizer.
Nervous. It's okay, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay.
Of Toccoho Juneteenth Committee, 42 Washington Street. Toccoho, on behalf of the Juneteenth Committee, we would like to thank Toccoho Kids Table for both Hudson, Axelbaum?
Yes.
Okay, and his family for the generous contribution, contribution to our organization. Hudson, while other work, there's ways towards being different. You strive towards making difference. Your big heart, warm smile, and beauty, beautiful energy you have serving this community in amazing, may you, may your work be a lesson to all. Better is possible. We are so very grateful to have you as a partner and neighbor. Hudson, thank you.
On behalf of the Toccoho Beautification Association, we graciously accept this generous donation. As always, it is because of this donation and those from our community members that we were able to keep the village beautiful by the various plantings around the town, the beautiful hanging baskets, and the Christmas wreaths, et cetera. Our next fundraiser will be Pictures with Santa, December 3rd, from 12 to 4 at the Community Center, and this information will be posted on the, on the Beautification Facebook page. Our annual mail-in fundraiser will be in February. We encourage the community to view our Facebook page and look forward to continued support and collaboration with Marandino, the Village Trustees, and of course, our wonderful Department of Public Works. Without your support, we would not be able to meet our goals. Once again, we thank you, specifically you, and look forward to continuing to make Toccoho beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Hudson. Thank you so much. Okay, so you have something else? Nope, no more questions. I'm sure people are asking, can you do it for us? Thank you. Thank you, Hudson. Thank you, Mom. I know this takes a lot of effort, the entire family, if you could just stay for a few more minutes. So the next order of business is, are these Youth Service Awards? And the Youth Service Awards are gonna be presented by Trustee Kara Cronin. We have had several events throughout the year in the village, and as you guys know, it takes a lot of time and effort to put forth these events, and I really thank our trustee Kara Cronin, who is the events liaison to the, to the village, who gives so much to make sure that the youth specifically have a lot of different events to participate in. And so there were some young people who always show up to give of their time, their talent, and so we want to acknowledge that, and so trustee Cronin will do that now.
So I just wanna say thank you, thank you to everybody. This village steps up. When I put out a call, everybody answers. I cannot tell you how important it is and what that means to us. It really does take a village, and you all are a village, you're all community. And some people really go above and beyond, so I thought it would be nice to honor some of the young people who go above and beyond. Two of the young people who we are honoring tonight could not be here, one of them is sick and the other one couldn't make it. So in, just to say thank you to their families, I'd like to honor Michaela Moore Smith and Justin Smith, and, and say thank you very much for all the work that you do. We have two more honorees tonight that are here, and so Daniel and Dylan Lang, will you please stand?
So Daniel and Dylan, amongst all the other things they do, I think I can talk about.
Okay, amongst all the other things that they do are part of the Youth Community Fund, and every time I say I need volunteers, their names are always on the list. They show up, they work hard, I give them a bunch of materials, and I say, here, please make magic happen, and they make magic happen. And for that, I'm very, very grateful, and you are a true testament to your parents and your family and the community that you come from and the schools that you attend. So thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you, Daniel and Dylan, and I'd like to read their certificate. It says, Village of Toccoho Certificate of Recognition, presented to Daniel Lang and Dylan Lang, in recognition of your outstanding service and volunteerism within the Village of Toccoho, you are presented with this Youth Community Service Award, given this seventh day of November 2022. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
And yeah, if you'd like to say something, I also just wanna say thank you to, to Mom and Dad, because sometimes parents need to give a little push. I don't know that you guys need that, but we appreciate that, you know, you have your, your children who give so much back to the community, so thank you. And we have one more that I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
We'd just like to thank the board for this, the honor and the recognition. We just encourage all the young people to take part as well. It takes a village, like trustee Kara Cronin said.
Thank you.
I want, I want that last part to be said again. We lost the last part, that last part. What's going on with the mic, Wade?
Oh, we just like to encourage all the young people to do the same.
Yes. Thank you. And we do have one more?
Yep, we have one more, for a young man who has raised over $3,000 this year for our local community organizations. Hudson Axelbaum, would you please stand? Now, Hudson, I owe you an apology, so I'm going to show you, I'm giving you this folder, and then I'm going to owe you a certificate because your name got spelled wrong. My fault.
Sorry.
I'm so sorry. But congratulations and thank you so much for all the work that you have done all summer long and all the hard work you continue to do for our community, and what a great idea it was to have a kids' table at the farmer's market. Thank you.
Okay, and we have one more, right? No, just hold on to it to give to Deputy Mayor.
So we have one more certificate to give. We work with a lot of organizations, but one organization in particular this year has stepped up for basically every event that we've asked them. They come, they work hard, they again, also make magic happen. Literally, last year, some people were making balloon animals when I didn't even have balloons to give. So we'd like to thank the entire group of Troop 19, the girls. The girls' group of scouts, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so you can all stand up. All stand up. Come on up. So I'd also like to thank Ivana Brizniska and Jenny Alia, their troop leaders, for volunteering also with them and for being there, and thank you so much for all that you do. And please continue to make magic happen wherever you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Does everybody feel good now? Wade, the mic?
Thank you so much. We'd like to thank, thank you all for this honor, and we are allowed to function and operate because of the Village of Toccoho, and so we're so grateful and we're so happy to serve the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I think the meeting is over, everyone can go home, kidding, just kidding. All right, so we, we do have some public hearings. I don't know if the troop needs to leave now, you, if you want to before we begin our public hearings. You, you're welcome to do so now. Okay, oh, that's right, they're saying, bye, guys. Have a good night.
Good night, thank you.
So our first public hearing for the evening. And David, I'll ask you to give a little explanation. Public hearing to consider a proposed local law modifying Chapter 6 of the Toccoho Village Code titled Administration and Enforcement of Uniform Code as per requirement from New York State.
First, I just wanna say we did have a, a good representative on Zoom. There's a lot of people on there, and all of a sudden, they're all gone, so they did come to see the fun part of the meeting. Congratulations to everyone and all the awards, it's really nice. This is a little bit more boring. New York State earlier this year wanted every municipality in the New York State to update what they call is Article X, Administration and Enforcement of the Uniform Code. So what we do is we, we use the New York State Building Code, so any of the building code regulations and things like that, we, we mirror that, and we have this article that talks about how we enforce the actual uniform code. Last month, we set the public hearing, thinking that we are ready to, you know, give this to the Board of Trustees and actually have you pass this. It is a lot more complicated and it intermeshes with our regular code a lot more than we originally anticipated, so therefore, we have a lot of cross-referencing to do. But basically, what this does is it updates this in a myriad of different ways, and one of the biggest one is the Energy Code. So the Energy Code needs to be looked at in different ways, as you know, when someone comes in for a building permit application, we have to look at that a little bit more specifically now, and it gives some regulation on how we do that. It defines roles of who's in the building department and who's allowed to sign certain certificates and who's allowed to do certain inspections and all those types of things. So it even talks about remote inspections and how to, you know, put that process into place. So those are types of things that we really need to look at a little bit more intently before, you know, we allowed, or you guys should pass this. The, the public hearing is open, so anyone can comment on this, but obviously, it's not on for a resolution because it's not in the final form.
Right, okay.
So basically, there's a lot of different things in here, and we're just kinda going through it still, you know, trying to figure out how it works best for the municipality. So obviously, right now.
And it's posted so that people can view it.
If they're interested in falling asleep, yeah.
You never know, if you have insomnia, have something to read. So the public hearing will remain open. If there's anyone that would like to weigh in on this proposed local law, you may do so now, those who are in person? Yes. You should come to the mic, please.
I just have a question. Is this posted on the Toccoho Board website? If someone does wanna look at it, where is it posted?
It was posted, it, I had to take it down because I had a different version, but I didn't get the new one up yet, so it'll be posted tomorrow, the correct version that we're talking about.
Where will it be posted?
If you go to where the agenda is posted, it'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom left? Anyone on Zoom would like to weigh in on this proposed local law? Okay, so we'll move on to propose, the public hearing number two, to consider a proposed local law amending Chapter 11A of the Village Code to amend the members of the Historic Preservation Commission from three to five. I think at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about this. So the board established a Historic Preservation Committee, Commission with three members, and we decided, or have been talking about, and they proposed adding two more members so that it makes it less difficult when decisions have to be made. So if you have people who have to recuse themselves, or if someone is out, then it makes it a bigger challenge. So we are opening the public hearing to hear from the public, your thoughts on increasing the members from three to five for the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission. If there's anyone who would like to weigh in? Now, did we open this last time? No. We did open it? Okay, so I need a, a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So if anyone would like to address the board on this public hearing agenda, please do so now. Anyone in person? Anyone on Zoom? Okay? And if any of the board members would like to weigh in on this public hearing now, you may do so. But otherwise, if there's no one, we, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we'll move on to adoption, actually, we'll move on to the resolution, authorizing a proposed local law amending the code to increase the membership from three to five. May I have a motion to authorize that law?
So moved. Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the Historic Preservation Commission will be increased to five members. I'll go back to the adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 3rd, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and so we'll go to resolution number two, authorizing the professional services contract with Smith, Smith and Pacillo Architects in the amount of $34,200 for design services at the public, at the Toccoho Public Library. As you've heard us talking about, the plans to renovate the library, and so I'm asking for a motion to enlist the professional services of Smith and Pacillo.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number three, authorizing the professional services contract with Calgate Construction in the amount of $16,500 for pre-construction services at the library. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So resolution number four, so this is a law that we pass every year. I know, I got, I got a few messages, people asking if there is a, there's a resolution, there's a proposition on the ballot to move the elections from March to November, and it passes, then what happens with this resolution? It would make it null and void, basically, right? So we, we do have to pass this resolution because we don't know if it will pass as a proposition or not. So I will ask for a motion authorizing the polling locations for all the districts to be, to be held at the Toccoho Community Center at 71 Columbus Avenue from 6 to 9 on March 21st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that is, of course, pending the proposition election. Resolution number five, authorizing an IMA with the Town of Eastchester and the Village of Bronxville regarding 911 Emergency Alerting System, that's the SWIFT, what is it, chief? SWIFT Reach. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and number seven, authorizing the closing of the following capital projects. I'm gonna ask for a motion for project. Oh, yeah, sorry. Collective bargaining agreement, can't forget that.
It's important.
So may I have a motion authorizing the, a collective bargaining agreement with the Toccoho Police Benevolent Association, which has been negotiated for a few months with the police department? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then I'll move on to authorizing the closing of the following capital projects. So project ending in 0140 for the DPW administrative, administration vehicle, 0151 for the police department vehicle, and 0152 for road resurfacing. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have to pay the bills, so may I have a motion authorizing the approval And we have to pay the bills. So, may I have a motion authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $851,387.77?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So, let's move on to departmental reports. Chief, do you have anything? Okay. DPW Superintendent Frank DeMarco.
I was told to make it short, so here I go.
Because, because I'm hungry.
Leaf season again is upon us, you know, please create piles of leaves by the curbside. Do not park cars on top of the leaves. Catalytic converter could cause fires that are underneath each car. So, please. But please don't call us to find out when we'll get to your home because we have no set schedule. We start at the south end, we move our way up to the north end, and whenever we come by your home is when we get there. So, we're, we're trying to operate as fast as we can and as efficiently as we can. So, there shouldn't be any complaints. I want to thank everybody for also being DPW Day, making it what it was. I mean, it was a great turnout. So many people were there. It was beautiful weather. And again, it was just another fantastic turnout. Am I moving too fast?
Nope.
Okay. All right. We're talking about EV charging stations within the Village of Tuckahoe. We have probably several locations that we were, we've been working on for almost a year now. So, the EV charging sta, electric vehicle charging station, that's what EV charging station stands for. So, we have numerous locations within the Village of Tuckahoe. I just want to name some. They're up and running. The Fisher Avenue Parking Lot is one. Columbus Avenue Stretch by Dante Avenue. Lake Avenue Parking Lot. Trying to do this without looking at my paper. The Oak Street Parking Lot. The Main Street Parking Lot. And we also have it here in Village Hall, and we also have it at DPW. So, the only site that's pending and waiting on Con Edison's electrical power is Depot Square. With that said, I just want to wish everybody, DPW Department and myself, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Library Report, Director Paschanda.
Thank you, everyone. As all, as you know, I always come and have a list of different programs. So, today I'm going to start with the good news. Library grant application for 2021, '22 for construction grant for the children and teen areas in the amount of $150,000 has been approved. And this is a matching grant, so Village committed to give us $125,000 and Friends of the Library, $25,000 respectively. So, I want to thank you to the Village Board and Friends for supporting the library. Also, the Tuckahoe Library received the notification from Assemblywoman Amy Pollens' office for capital funding in the amount of $500,000 from SAM programs, which is state and municipal...
That deserves, that deserves an applause.
For the renovation of the library and purchase of furniture. So, very excited and thank you to the Board for passing the resolution. And upcoming some of our programs, I just have few going, because if you, long list. So, today is the first day we started the weekly sewing classes. Every Monday, it's going to be at 6:00 PM. Ms. Melissa will teach participant the basic of sewing with machines. Machines are provided by the library and they are going to make special tote bags, apron, pajama pants, and more. So, spaces are limited, so please sign up as soon as, if you are interested. And on November 9th at 5:00 PM, we will hold our very popular crafting, beautiful beaded earrings workshop. You can make one set to keep and one set to donate to the Women's Shelter. And next week on Monday, November 14th at 7:00 PM, we will celebrate Native American Heritage Month with a special Zoom presentation from storyteller and historian Anne Jenison. Ms. Jenison will lead us through an oral performance of traditional stories from our local Ebonaki tribes. And Thursday, November 10th at 5:15, we will continue our financial literacy workshop for middle school, schoolers with a discussion of income and spending streams so they can prepare to receive and use money. And our Dungeon and Dragon Game with Ms. Miriam saw so much demand that we added another session. Mr. Justin will run the alternate monthly Dungeon and Dragon Game. We're teens, get to explore their creativity while learning cooperation and provisional storytelling. And our regulars, you know, yoga, Tai Chi, and craft programs, lots of programs, story times, book clubs, all these information, all these programs are available, offer on Zoom and some in person. So, if you have any question, give us a call or email us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Camille, do you have anything?
No.
Gary, David?
I want to talk about a couple of different items. First, I just wanted to, as he walked out the room, officially congratulate Daryl on his appointment to DPW. He's going to be a great asset down there. So, congratulations to him. Second, we went through, went through the agenda really quick. And sometimes, you know, I, I look at this and I go, there's a lot of hard work behind some of these items. With the, the, what's going on at the library, what's been going on for the past year, year and a half, multiple years with what Swadish has been doing down there to get grants, and what Carolina's been doing to help design this. This is really the first step of really kickstarting this project. And it's really exciting. Just with the amount of grant money that Swadish has gotten the last, you know, number of months, it's, it's really going to be a beautiful project. So, I'm really, you know, I'm excited about that, and the community should be as well. The police contract that was signed, I just want to kind of say thanks to trustee Cronin, who, you know, worked with myself to work with the Police Department on coming to a, a collective bargaining agreement that I think it works for all sides. And I think at the end of the day, it just kind of makes sense. So, you know, thank you for everyone part of that process to make it as painless as possible. Traffic lights have been on the mind. I know that we, a number of months ago, we started to do traffic signal upgrades, and that project has stalled out. And we've waited for poles and poles and poles. But I am now told that those poles are actually being painted right now. So, hopefully, that will be kickstarted in the next couple of weeks. We'll actually start to see these go up. In regards to traffic signals, again, as our Main Street light that we constantly hear about and constantly look at, I know Mayor, you'll talk a little bit about the, the proposal in Yonkers, of the Yonkers Development. But we, so, we have a letter that we provided to the, the City of Yonkers in regards to that development and the traffic impacts that it may have. And our consultants have come up with a couple of ideas that they have for that signal. Not sure if they're going to work, but again, I just want to let know that this is something that we constantly talk about and constantly try to review and, and work with. And the last thing I want to talk about is, well, I don't want to talk about flooding issues, but it's something that we constantly talk about here in a couple of different tracks. So, we have been speaking with our, our representatives, our congressional representatives, and the United States Army Corps of Engineers on a couple of different tracks. So, one of the big problems we have is that we have the Bronx River, and that water comes from the north and it flows south. And whatever we do within the village, it's never going to stop that water coming down. So, something that we've trying to push for is a comprehensive study of the entire corridor. That means getting other municipalities involved, the state involved, the county involved, and having the Army Corps do a kind of comprehensive review. That has proven a lot more difficult than we first imagined. One is that they need specific congressional authorization to actually do a study. And then, two, once they have that congressional authorization, it needs to be funded. And that's, you know, even, that's the bigger part. So, the congressional authorization, there may be some language after Hurricane Sandy that allows the Army Corps to do this. However, that's still being looked at. And actually, a congressional inquiry has gone into Washington to see if the language does correlate with the Bronx River. If it does, hopefully, we'll jump to the next step of looking for funding. Getting the state, the county, other municipalities on board to figure out the funding. And then, if that comes into play, an actual comprehensive analysis. It's a, it's going to be a long process. It's going to be a lot of pushing, but these are the types of things we're working on. Corollary to that, we're trying to figure out what types of issues that, or what types of projects we can do in the village specifically. Mr. DeMarco left, but we're looking to, well, to take a step back. Any work that's within a certain area of the river needs to go through the Army Corps. So, we've talked to them going, how far away does it need to be? If it doesn't, you know, what types of projects can we do on our own without going through the permitting process? And that's what we're going through now, is bringing some ideas to them, saying if we did this here, would that trigger a permitting process? And would we have to go through a full review? So, we're kind of doing that now. And something that we're looking at is, and on Yonkers Avenue, to try to create a wall to better divert water so it doesn't go over to Elm Street and down into the Garrett neighborhood. Kind of looking at that now to see if that is some, a possibility. Another possibility is potentially a berm somewhere. So, those are the types of things we're looking at. We're looking at stuff that we can do without the Army Corps of Engineers, and then kind of pushing a bigger track. So, just wanted to give a quick update, saying that these are constantly on our minds. We're constantly trying to figure out, you know, ways to improve that issue.
Thanks, David. And the Board have any questions? Okay. So, let's move to, well, just some dates for everyone to keep in mind. The Tuckahoe Winter Fest is on Saturday, December 3rd, from 3:00 to 8:00 PM in Depot Square. The Tuckahoe, the Village Board meeting, the next Village Board meeting will be on December 5th. So, keep those dates on your calendars. And that'll move us to Board of Trustee Reports, and we'll start with Deputy Mayor, since our trustee Engelbert is not here.
Thank you, Mayor. This month's zoning board meeting will be held November 8th at 7:30 PM. There are three variances for the Board to consider. One at 41 Silvan to one in the driveway, a second at Sixth Circle Road for a finished basement, and one at 8 Oakland Avenue for fence height. The next planning board meeting will be Tuesday, November 15th at 7:30. There's just two items there. Return of a site plan and an amendment that will be presented for 25 Main Street. And a second will be a plan for a bike rack at 100 Columbus. That was something that the, you know, company that just took over that building had promised the residents, so it's good to see that coming forward. Another committee that has been very active is the Historic Preservation Commission, which met on October 26th. And I encourage everybody to watch that video on YouTube because it contains a lot of really great history. Discussion about historic sites that have been identified throughout the village. And in particular, they focused on the history of the Washington Hotel, which is right up here, a beautiful stone building in Main Street, which Dr. Petronella has his dentist practice in. And this building has, has been nominated for historic landmarking, and a public hearing will be opened at their November meeting, if anybody's interested in discussing that. For the Eastchester Schools, the next scheduled Board of Ed meeting, work session, will be on Tuesday, November 15th at 7:30 PM in the Eastchester High School Library. To access the live stream link, you can go to live stream links and recordings tab on the Board of Education homepage. The senior class fashion show, which is the biggest event for the senior class, next to graduation, of course, will be held November 10th at the Surf Club on the Sound. And you can reach out to the high school PTA for more information on that. A group of athletes from Eastchester, focusing, I think, on the swim team, are sponsoring the 2022 Polar Plunge to support the Eastchester Septa PTA and the Special Olympics that will take place on November 12th at Westchester County Beach Club. The link is on my Facebook page if you want to do the plunge, or if you just want to donate. Westchester County Cross Country Championship, sophomore Eva Penachicho won out of 177 girls who ran the weight race. She came in first. So, I just wanted to congratulate her. The Eastchester Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams won League Champs this year, and the Boys Varsity won Class One, Section A. So, I wanted to just congratulate, you know, those are the, those are the people who sign up for the Tuckahoe Challenge. In addition, to, to jump over, Tuckahoe Cross Country Team has done really well as well. The girls there secured the Section One, Class D championship, and have to give a shout out to my favorite runner. And yes, I do have one, Owen Gertsen, who qualified to advance to the state level championship. So, congratulations, Owen. Also, congratulations to Coach Marissa Fushanti, who, besides coaching the wonderful Cross Country Team at Tuckahoe Schools, also ran the New York City Marathon yesterday, which was brutal. So, tomorrow is November 8th, and it is Election Day. So, it's your last chance to vote on your congressional members, your State House members. And of course, we're reminding everybody to turn over your ballot because for the village, you have two propositions to vote on. Proposition one is a statewide proposal that would issue $4.2 billion in general obligation bonds for projects that would be classified as climate change mitigation, flood risk reduction, and water infrastructure and land conservation. And that ballot measure also includes that, that at least 35% of the bond revenue benefit would disadvantage, would benefit disadvantaged communities. And of course, Prop Two is specific for the village, and that is to move the village elections from March to the general elections in November. I wanted to thank everybody who attended our October Vaccine Clinics. I think if you have seen, the U.S. Surgeon General is, is recommending that we all get the bivalent boosters and the flu prior to the holidays to help reduce the spread of both of those viruses. A couple of weeks ago, I missed DPW Day because I had flu, and I haven't had flu since the vaccines came out because I usually get the vaccine in November, and it came early this year. They were right. And it was absolutely no fun. So, please get vaccinated. I wanted to congratulate Police Officer Stephen McCann, who graduated at the end of October from the New York State SWAT School. So, that's a pretty, pretty important accomplishment. And I wanted to really thank and congratulate trustee Kara Cronin and all of the volunteers for a really great Halloween celebration on Main Street. So, we accomplished two things. One, we had a legitimate reason to close down Main Street, which was a goal of the Board. And there were so many people there. It was crazy. It was a really wonderful thing. And that's it. So, I wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Trustee Taylor?
On Thursday, November 10th at 10:00 AM, there will be a Veterans Day salute by the students and faculty of the St. Joseph School, which is located at 30 Meadow Avenue in Bronxville. Also, on Thursday, the 10th at 6:00 PM, the Hero Next Door, which is an interactive educational event honoring our veterans. This event will be held at the Tuckahoe Community Center, 71 Columbus Avenue. And featuring live music by the Tuckahoe High School Jazz Quintet, light refreshments will be served. This is a great opportunity for students to learn firsthand from survivors of foreign war. On Friday, November 11th, Veterans Day Mass at Assumption Church at 7:30 AM. And also on Friday, the 11th, Veterans Day Ceremony at 11:00 AM will be hosted by the Eastchester Veterans. In conjunction with the Veterans Day, the Town of Eastchester will commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Memorial Park dedication. Special musical guests, including local singers and the Yonkers Military Band. The Memorial Park is located at the corner of White Plains Road and California Road. All are welcome to attend. The Eastchester Community Action Partnership. Our partnership with Tuckahoe School District began on November 1st. Three teachers come to the ECAP after, excuse me, after-school program three days a week to provide assistance with, for the children with their homework. And the ECAP Thanksgiving food distribution will be on November 16th for ECAP-registered families. Once again, I would like to congratulate Daryl Gray on his new appointment. Congratulations to all the youth for their service awards, to Hudson for his fine work in the community. And I just wanted to mention, one gentleman, his name is Stanley Farrell. He was a longtime Tuckahoe resident, and he passed away last Thursday. He's someone that, he's older than me, but I grew up with him and his brother, Michael, and his mother, Virginia Farrell, who I believe is in her 90s. She's still at four-union and going strong. So, condolences to the Farrell family. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Taylor. Trustee Cronin?
Hello, everybody. Good evening. So... Hello, everybody. Good evening. So I want to thank everybody in this room, really, because the Creepy Candy Crawl was a success because of all of your efforts. I cannot do these events without the help of this community. And when I put out a call, everybody answers. I ask for candy donations, and candy gets delivered to my home, to the village, to the police department, to the library, to the community center. Candy just starts showing up everywhere. And that is a real testament to what this village is all about. And so I really just want to say thank you. Thank you for all the volunteers. There were so many of them. It would really be hard for me to, to name them all. But the Christian family is here, so I'll say thank you to you all. And Troop 19 and the Youth Community Fund, they always step up. They always come. Huge thank you to DPW and the police department, and especially Sergeant Chris Harris, who danced Thriller with us. And this board, who was more than happy to put themselves out there and dance in the middle of the street. Thank you to everyone who like, kind of just goes along with this dream. And to all the people who came, it's, it's, it's really a wonderful event, and I'm so happy to help organize it. We had a lot of stores and businesses, and the Chamber of Commerce really reached out to all of their membership, even in Eastchester. And people just came. Thank you to Remax, who came and brought a whole, what is that, a photographer to take people's pictures. And, you know, Nature's Cradle, who came and brought apples for every, for everyone. So stay tuned for next year, David.
And Chief.
Yeah. Okay, so the Beautification Committee, I can't believe I'm about to say this, is getting ready to put up their Christmas wreaths, their holiday wreaths. So it is the most, the other most wonderful time of the year. As you know, and I think we're all aware, prices of just about everything have gone up this year, and that includes wreaths. And so please keep them in mind when you're doing your end of year giving. They, and they have made it possible for you to donate online now. And if you have any questions about that, you can always reach out to me. You can also just send them a good old fashioned check. And so please remember, the Beautification Committee, they are doing a fundraiser at the, on the same day as Winterfest. So that day is December 3rd. This fundraiser will be of pictures with Santa at the community center from 12 to 4. It's $20 for a child or for the whole family. And so, you know, you can come and get your picture taken. They have three photographers there, so they'll come in and out. Please come. You don't need a reservation. You don't need an appointment. You can just show up. And that information is on the village Facebook page, and it's also on the Beautification Committee's Facebook page. And you can also get that information from us. Okay. So as trustee Taylor mentioned, on Thursday, we're having a Veterans Day ceremony called the Hero Next Door at the community center. This is really an educational program. So I think it's really important for people to come, families to come and bring their children. It's a good opportunity to meet and interact with some of our veterans. And I'm going to put one of them on the spot because he happens to be here, Mr. Laurie. So come and meet people, talk to them, talk, you can hear about their experiences and their time of service, and, and hopefully learn something and, and kind of meet your neighbors. And that's really what this is all about. It's, it's getting to know the people who serve our community. Because one thing that I have learned from working on this program is that the veterans in this community are incredibly service minded. And so thank you for that. The seniors had their annual bazaar last month. It was a huge success. It was so nice to see everybody back at the community center. I, we want to, they want to thank everybody who stepped up and donated and came out and volunteered. They had lots of raffles, and it was a very fun event. The following week, Keller Williams held their annual masquerade ball. And they honor, they raised money for the Tuckahoe seniors also. They raised $10,000 for them this year. So thank you to Keller Williams. As you might, you know, they really go above and beyond for our seniors, and we're really appreciative. And as a result, the Chamber of Commerce is honoring Keller Williams at this year's Business of the Year event because they do so much for our community. So thank you to them. The center is closed tomorrow for veterans, for Election Day. Please remember to go out and vote. And they are holding the seniors their annual Thanksgiving luncheon on Tuesday, November 22nd.
Thank you, trustee Cronin. So I just want to give people an update and also inform some people who may not know. I've gotten a few messages on Facebook and in my email asking about the project at 21 Scarsdale Road. So first and foremost, the building, it was the, the bank, Sterling Bank, was purchased by Developers National Resources. And that property is in Yonkers. It's not in Tuckahoe. So whatever happens on that property is, has nothing to do with Tuckahoe in terms of planning board or approvals or permits. So that's important for people to know because it is right there on the border. So people automatically assume that it's in Tuckahoe. It is in Yonkers, as is Wicked Wolf North, the new restaurant that used to be the old Stone Mill. We received a, an email from the developers, Joe Cotter and Lynn Ward of National Resources, asking to come and visit with me and with our village administrator to just talk about their project. And we didn't know what to expect at this meeting. And basically, they came to say they wanted to be good neighbors. Joe Cotter grew up in Crestwood and traveled the world, became, you know, this world renowned developer. And now has come back and is, you know, has some projects in the Hudson Valley and came back to, to, to Yonkers. And just said, because we're so close, he wants to be a good neighbor, wanted to know how he might be able to help, and wanted to put our minds at ease that he wanted to work with the village. So that was, that was good. He also was very open, he and Lynn, were very open to helping us if we needed some funding with our traffic project, our traffic light project. We've talked about this a couple of months. It's proven that it's not quite as simple as we anticipate, as I anticipated. I won't say David. David probably anticipated it. And so we, you know, the cost is probably going to be higher than we also thought. And so it's good that they offered to be of assistance in terms of the funding for that project. So we are in the middle of working with engineers. They've provided a report, and we're asking for some more information on that report. And so we are hopeful that we'll be able to resolve some of the issues with the traffic lights that many for probably decades have complained about. We're going to try and get that resolved. And thankfully, we do have the support, and it seems like probably the partnership of the developers to assist with that project should the need arise. And I anticipate it will. So just so you guys know, the, the building is going to have 150 units. They are affordable housing, not low income, but affordable housing. So they won't be pricey like the Riverview, but they're not, you know, rents that you'll find at, let's say, the Tuckahoe Housing Authority. They are not property, those are all rentals. They're not purchased apartments. So that's also important to note. And they've, they've, they've reached out to me a couple of times to say they wanted to come back and take a look at maybe some other things that they may be able to assist with. And so we're very open to that. So just wanted to give you guys that information. Back to the vaccine clinics. Deputy Mayor talked about the vaccine clinics we had in October. I have had people reach out that said they couldn't make the last one. So we are going to have another one sometime between now and maybe the beginning of December. Not sure when we'll have availability at the community center or some other space in the village. I do want to thank Narayan Pharmacy for reaching out and asking to assist. We will have a different pharmacy the next time. And also to thank the board, who always volunteers to be there, you know, specifically Deputy Mayor Howell, who asks for the manufacturer, and where was it made? And I don't know, talk to the guy. So she's very helpful. And thankfully, we, we have that resource in her. So thank you, Deputy Mayor. I also want to acknowledge National Native American Heritage Month. And our veteran, Josh Giacconi, walked right in at the right time. Because I've asked him, and for those of you who don't know Josh, he is one, he's one of our veterans who does a lot of work in our community. And I've asked him to take on the project of researching our indigenous history here in Tuckahoe, which many people don't know about and are curious about. And so I'm grateful that he's accepted that project. He's already begun some work in that area. And so I think it's always good for us to know our entire history. And I think it would be very interesting. I've learned a little bit about it through the Wardhouse project and the application that came in. So I'm interested to hear more about that. I want to thank our trustee Kara Cronin for the Creepy Candy Crawl's huge, huge, huge success. If you guys saw the board, thanks to Deputy Mayor. She got us all in our, you know, Cat in the Hat and Thing 1, 2, and 3 costumes. And it was, it was a big hit because all of the kids knew as soon as they saw us, oh, here's Cat in the Hat. So thank you to Kara Cronin for, no matter what project I ask her to take on, she goes, sure. Let me ask the chief to close the streets. So thank you, trustee Cronin, for that. And also, you know, in commemoration of Veterans Day, the village, you know, as you've heard, is hosting our Hero Next Door. And this idea was born out of an event that I attended for the 9/11 ceremony, where they, the Rotary Club sponsored an event, and they had all of the, the people who died in Eastchester and Tuckahoe at, during that 9/11 tragedy, they had their picture up and their story. And it really resonated with me because it helped me to connect with who those people were. I've heard their names several years, every time we have a 9/11 ceremony. But I never felt like I knew who they were until that day in that moment. And I felt that that was really important for us to, to carry over into our veterans. Because many people know veterans. They've seen the banners up. You know, there's a whole bunch of controversy about the banners. But no one really, not no one, a lot of people really didn't know who some of these veterans were. And I thought it was really important to educate our community, especially our youth, about who they were, what did they do. And so I asked our, you know, our trustee Cronin and veteran Josh Giacconi to take on this project and to interview 11 of our veterans, to take pictures of them now, so we could have pictures of them then, when they were in service, and their pictures now. And then their stories to be told. And so we, we're going to have this ceremony at the community center. And I really encourage families to come out and to bring their children, because I think this is a really, really important way to get to know who our veterans are, what's important to them. You know, I've talked a lot with trustee Cronin about her interviews with them. And she just said, you know, really just was just so powerful how she said practically all of them, their whole purpose in life is service. And so that's really important for us to instill in our children and to learn more about who they are as people. So we will, we will have poster boards with everyone's story, all 11 veterans, including our Anthony Laurie, who is here with us. And we're going to highlight three from, one from each community, one from Bronxville, one from Eastchester, and one from Tuckahoe. So I encourage you to come out on Thursday evening at 6:00 p.m. We will have the Tuckahoe Jazz, High School Jazz Quartet sharing their music with us. And we'll have some light refreshments, and we'll just get to know our veterans a little bit better in an intimate setting. So would you do that with me, Tuckahoe? Thank you. So that is my report. I want to ask everyone to, on, you know, on Friday, it's Veterans Day. Thank a veteran, call a rep, a veteran, and ask if there's anything that you can do to help to serve them as they've served us in, you know, in significant ways. So thank you all, and also happy Thanksgiving. So at this point, there's opportunity to address the board. Come on up, Mr. Laurie.
Good evening, good evening, board.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to thank David Burke for giving us the trolley. The veterans appreciate it. And if anyone's coming to the ceremony on, on Friday, you can park their cars in Lake Island. I'll be transporting them back and forth. Trustee Taylor, thank you, but you took my whole report. You said everything. And I could say, other than that, I'll try to make it Thursday night because Thursday night I have a fire commissioners meeting. So I'll do my best to make it. The Board of Commissioners meet on Thursday evening at 7 o'clock at the Town Board. Also, I just want to remind everybody to tell their gardeners as well as themselves, please do not block the fire hydrants. That's a very important thing. I've seen hydrants blocked. And just remember, guffa bit, if the, an engine has to hook up there, it takes that man that much longer to clear the hydrant first before he could hook up. And my deepest sympathy to the Farrell family, because I went to school with their, with their older brother and all that. And I just want to remind everybody, happy Thanksgiving to all. And just remember, November 22nd is the day of President Kennedy's assassination. Let's take a time, a minute out of your daily work and just remember him in a prayer. Thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Laurie, you can attend the event at 6:00 and still make it to your meeting. So we would like to see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Laurie.
Anyone else would like to address the board?
Hello, my name is Samantha. And I just wanted to say a huge thanks to trustee Kara Cronin and the whole village for the Candy Crawl. Halloween is mine and my mom's absolute favorite holiday of the entire year, even more than our birthdays. And so we always, always go all out for Halloween. And it was great to be a part of the Candy Crawl. We got to meet so many people, neighbors, and people from all over. And it was just a great experience. So thank you for hosting that in our village. It was, it was quite a fabulous moment. And since the next meeting isn't until December, I won't get a chance possibly to see you guys before Thanksgiving. So I wanted to say thank you so much to everybody on the board, especially during these very difficult and scary times. It's nice to know that every one of you are democracy defenders. You guys are all fighters, and you don't take any, you know, crap from bullies or bigots. And, no, no, for real. And I, and that's very important to me. It makes me feel safe and welcomed and feel that we have a strong community here. And I just wanted to say thank you to each of you for being who you are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board?
Hi, Madam Mayor, trustees, Josh Gatchium, 120 Belavista Street. First, I want to extend a happy Veterans Day to my fellow veterans and a welcome home to our Vietnam veterans. Thank you, Anthony. And happy birthday to Tony Fiori.
Hey, happy birthday.
And I just want to add to what the mayor had discussed briefly about our indigenous peoples and where we are here in Tuckahoe. And as we know, the meaning of Tuckahoe comes from the Lenapi word meaning?
Roots.
Yes, roots.
Roots.
Bulbous roots, right?
Yeah.
Which were primarily used as food sources. With the grace of God, I will be graduating with my doctoral degree in a year from now in history. And yeah, thank you. And I'm not there yet. I know Renee and Kara know all about it.
You're all coming to your dissertation.
Yeah, exactly. But we have really found some great primary and secondary resources over the last year since we've kind of taken this on. And with the help of Eastchester Town Historian Dick Forliano, I think we're really going to have some good information out for the village as to where we are, where we've came from, and how we got to where we are today. But I will leave you with one nugget. And it is, it is out there for you to read. But Edmund Ward, as we know from the Wardhouse, right Jenny? Traded or received 7,000 acres of land for 13 guns, 12 coats, 12 kettles, 12 axes, two attisces, which were woodworking tools, and four barrels of cider. And as much as I like my cider, you know, these are things we've got to look into a little more and kind of explain how we got to where we are today and make sure that we're representing the folks who were here before us. So Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to do that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for saying yes. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Anyone on Zoom? So I just want to acknowledge Anthony Fiori. I don't think I I don't think I go to any event or see any event on TV where he is not there. He supports his community in a way like I've never seen anyone really support. And so because it's your birthday, Anthony, I think you deserve a happy birthday song. So can we sing happy birthday to Anthony together?
Sure can.
Ready? One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Anthony. Happy birthday to you.
And many more. Thank you, Anthony, for always giving back to your community the way you do. I see you doing that. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board?
I just wanted to say one thing really quick.
Okay, Trustee Taylor has more.
No, just want to say good luck to the Tuckahoe Tigers. They are undefeated, the varsity football team, and they are playing at Mayapack at 3:00 on Friday. I believe that's their first playoff game, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
They're playing as a tribute to the veterans. So everyone have a great rest of your month, and we will see you on December 5th. Have a good night, Tuckahoe.